Started, let me find my agenda. If we can have a roll call, please.
Jesse McBride.
Here.
Jesse Marquez.
Here.
Jesse De Silco.
Here.
Vice President McAvoy.
Present.
President Lawson.
I'm here. So we are on item 4.2, report out on closed session from November 18th. So item 3.1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. 3.2 CSC negotiations update and 3.3 RCTA negotiations update. With all three items, the board received information and no action was taken. From everybody to the November 18th River City School Board meeting. I posted links in the chat for the agenda as well as comment cards and I will repost those again as more people join the meeting. If you'd like to speak to the board, please fill out the Google Doc and be sure to include your names so we know who to unmute when the time comes. If the item you wish to address is not on the agenda, you'll be called on during oral communication. If the item is on the agenda, you'll be called on when that item is being addressed. And the Google Doc will be available until about 7:15, at which time we will not be accepting any further comment cards. And just a reminder to the attendees, to please use the chat feature for clarifying questions or a short comment. But please do not use it for ongoing conversation or commentary as it gets distracting for the panelists. So that is it, we are on 6.1, are there any changes to the agenda? Dr. Baker, you wanted to move.
I think we're going to be fine if I'm not mistaken at this point in time. I don't know if the other guests are here yet.
Okay.
So I think we'll be fine.
Okay. And then I know Wendy, you would send a message about a board policy, are we leaving that one on?
Yes, that would be great and I can speak to that when we get to that item. Thank you.
So are there any changes then? There are none. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Maria.
Second. Dennis, second.
Dennis. And can we have a roll call vote, please?
McBride.
Aye.
Jesse Marquez. Jesse De Silco.
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy.
Aye.
President Lawson.
Aye. Thank you, may just. Okay. At this point, we do not have any cards for oral communication. So that brings us to item 9.1, the bond program update.
Great. I am going to hear Jerry Musgrave.
It's, sorry Will, it's hard to hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, if you could maybe sit closer to the microphone, that would be easier to hear you. Will, did we lose you or are you?
Yeah. Microphone disconnected, can you guys still hear me?
Uh, very, a lot of feedback.
Okay, let me.
That's better.
I can try dialing them through my phone real quick.
No, you're good.
Okay. If I need to speak louder, just please interrupt me. Are you able to see my screen and hear me?
Yes.
Here's our Measure T Bond Program Project Progress Tracking Matrix. All of the changes since the last time I shared this document are highlighted in yellow. So you can see 3150 Granger Way site. Construction is complete and we received DSA certification. Clifford is currently under construction. Fair Oaks, since the last update, construction has been completed and DSA certification is now in process. That's the 2950 Fair Oaks Avenue site, formerly Fair Oaks. Garfield, construction is in progress. Orion Alternative, formerly John Gill, construction is in progress. The 909 Roosevelt Avenue site, formerly Hawes. Construction is completed and DSA certification is in progress. Henry Ford, construction was recently completed and DSA certification is in progress. Hoover, construction is still in progress. Kennedy New Admin and Parking, construction completed and we've received DSA certification. The Kennedy Site Modernization Construction was recently completed and DSA certification is in process. McKinley and North Star, both sites, construction is completed and DSA certification has been received. Same goes for 815 Allerton Street Site, formerly Orion. Roosevelt Construction is in process and nearing completion. Roosevelt Asphalt Project was completed. Roy Cloud, construction is in process and is actually nearing completion. Adelante Selby Parking Project is completed. The Adelante Selby Modernization is in process and construction is nearing completion. Taffter Electrical Project is completed and the full Taff new construction and modernization, construction is in process. And then our solar interim housing, electric vehicle charging stations and our early quick start projects are all completed.
So I'd like to make a quick comment. This is really significant that we're getting DSA closeout because in previous constructions, we weren't as disciplined. And so literally 15, 16 years later, we're having to recreate documents to get approval. So this is just fabulous. So thank you, everybody on the bond team for all your hard work on this.
Absolutely, and thanks for noting that Dennis. I believe when we started this program four years ago, the district had approximately, you know, 35, 40 legacy projects that had been closed out without certification. And we are down to one remaining at Roosevelt. And we expect certification of that last legacy project soon. And we do not plan to leave any legacy projects with the district when our program is complete.
That is huge. So thank you Dawn and Will and everybody who's been working so hard on that. And it really is exciting to see all of these cells getting filled in. I remember when it was just a white spreadsheet and it seemed like it was going to be a lifetime before we saw these completed. It's really exciting.
It is very exciting to almost see the entire sheet grayed out. We're looking forward to that, to that day. And so I'm going to transition to the bomb program, construction progress photo update. Can you guys see this screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. And you're still able to hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So diving in Clifford School. So this is the Clifford Dolphin that was able to be salvaged and relocated. So they relocated it there to the front of the school. And this is ADA, an ADA compliant walkway as well. A new ornamental fencing in the front of Clifford School. So this is the outdoor, outdoor learning center in between two of the existing classroom links. This was a progress photo a couple of weeks back. These photos are from this week. So you see that the rebar has been placed and concrete pour has been started. Some concrete pour in progress. And a semi-completed concrete area of the outdoor learning center at Clifford. Moving on to Garfield School, these are some cool progress photos of the demo. So this is the front of the school and the old, old existing library. The demoed site. And the site as we begin to prep to drop the new CDC in the expanded parking lot area. Here's an overhead view. And so if you can see my mouse pointer, this is where the new CDC complex is going to go. And this is going to be the expanded parking lot area. A few more really cool pictures of demolition. And so this was the rear building A as it was being prepped for demolition. During demo. Demo nearing completion. And what the site looks like now. And so again, this is the back of Garfield School where the new two-story classroom building is going to go. Henry Ford School, we've shown some completion photos of the new front entryway with the new admin, new parking lot drop off. These are just a couple of pictures of kind of the finishing touches. So we put an ornamental gate around the, around the gas utility. And some planners. Just some finishing touches. Moving on to Hoover School. So this photo shows them lifting up the standing seam metal roof. Beautiful drone shot. This was actually taken this morning. An interior shot of the gym also taken this morning. And Hoover Kinder Play Structure and Play Area Surrounding. So this is going to be the future Hoover Garden, the relocated garden. And you can see they've done some of kind of the, the outdoor prep area. So the, the garden planters will be coming soon in that area back behind the colored, the colored decorative balls. Kennedy School, this is a completed, modernized science lab. So new flooring, new ceiling, new lighting and new sinks. Looks like a brand new classroom.
Will, is that where the office used to be?
I would need to report back on that.
No, no, that's, that's the actual science lab in 532 and in the, by the field.
Got it.
Thank you Dawn, yeah, freshly modernized science labs. Moving on to Orion Alternative School. So this is an overhead view of the new construction area. So prepping the utility pad, if you can see my pointer right here in kind of the top right corner. Preparing the elevator pit. And then down here is the preparation, the building foundation and retaining wall footing prep. So you can say, see, we've made some good progress at Orion Alternative School. This view gives a little bit more depth of the elevations we've achieved. Moving on to Roosevelt School, this is a completed, modernized bathroom. And the interior of the administration building reconfiguration. Roy Cloud School, this is the rear parking lot drop off loop ADA compliance upgrades. Moving on to Adelante Selby School. So this is the new administration building. You can see the fresh seal coat on the parking lot and new striping. Interior shot of the new administration building at Selby. And then a shot of the completed ornamental fencing and, you know, seal coat and striping at the front drop off loop at Adelante Selby School. Moving on to Taff School. This building, well, this portion of the new building is going to house the new admin and library. You can see that the foundation forms are in place. This is a shot of the concrete being poured for the amphitheater footings at Taff. Close up of the foundation forms. And an overhead of the full Taff new construction site. Soon to be the new two-story classroom building and amphitheater. And so right here, if you can see my pointer at top left, the freshly poured concrete footings for the amphitheater. You can see here, the yellow is the moisture barrier, prepping for the foundation pour. And then the admin and library area, I just showed you from another angle, prepping for the foundation pour. And that is my last photo. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you so much, Will. It's so great to see all the pictures.
Thank you guys.
Okay, nobody has any questions for Will? All right, then we can move on. So let's see, bond consent items, item 10, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Maria.
Second.
Lisa, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Jesse McBride.
Aye.
Jesse Marquez.
Aye.
Jesse De Silco.
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy.
Aye.
President Lawson.
Aye. All right, we have no bond program action items. So thank you, Will and Dawn and bond team and everybody for being here. We're going to move on, hi Dawn. Oh, by Will, sorry. 12.1, discussion on COVID-19.
Great, thank you, President Lawson. And this evening, what we're going to do is give you an update of where we are in the COVID-19 process that we have been working with since way back when, since, since the beginning of this fall, when we started school. So Wendy and Liz, and then I believe also Linda will probably be giving us an update. And I'll terminate with the timeline that we have from now until January. So I believe Wendy, you're going to share your screen if I'm not mistaken.
Wendy or me?
Or somebody.
I can share it.
Okay, that's fine.
Maybe. We'll see.
There it goes, it's fine.
You got it?
Yeah, it's great. Yeah, good. All right, here's the update. So I believe we start with the next slide, Liz, please. And so as you can see, topics of overview this evening, each of those items are bulletin. And we'll begin with the next slide and I believe that is Wendy.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I appreciate your time tonight. I did want to speak about our current negotiations with our union groups. We are working with CSCA to continue the process of finalizing our MOU. We're actually meeting tomorrow evening for our next session. And so I'm hoping by our next board meeting, I will have a update and more information to share in that regard. But we have been working diligently and I'm interested and excited for a nice resolution coming shortly. In regards to RCTA, RCTA is our teachers' union. And we met last Friday to work on the return in-person MOU for January. And we did complete it on Friday, which was wonderful. Everyone worked very hard. The team of RCTA with Chief Negotiator Brian Cagle, RCTA President Aaron Washburn, Jennifer Tonti and Michelle Torito, both teachers at Clifford, Michelle being the RCTA grievance chair. And we had a guest, Debbie Figaro, the kindergarten teacher at Henry Ford, who is currently a pilot teacher. She gave a lot of great insight about how pilot teachers are doing. And because we had a separate MOU with the pilot teachers, as you may recall. And then she brought information to our meeting that assisted us with creating even a more comprehensive MOU for January return. So a real big appreciation to Debbie Figaro. So in regards to this MOU, as you've been hearing, of course, over the last couple of months, once we received information from our county, the district absolutely has a priority to return students on campus in a safe manner. We know that in-person instruction is what our children need. We do appreciate all of the hard efforts of distance learning. As we all know, that really threw us for a loop when we started in March. And teachers have done an excellent job in working through that process. But for many reasons, not only academic, for social emotional reasons as well. We know it's important to have children on campus. So within the MOU, we really encouraged our teachers to return in person if, if they were able to. And so we address these following items on this slide. The health and safety section really focused on PPE and really giving teachers whatever they wanted. We have obviously masks and gloves and aprons as options. Hand sanitizer, of course, all the soap that they need, all of the elements that is important to make sure people are safe. Hand washing stations for classrooms that don't have sinks in them, for example, portables. So the health and safety section was really a robust section, making sure that we had all the elements that teachers would need to feel safe and comfortable because we recognize that that is an important element and has been, of course, through this entire process. We're also supplying infrared handheld thermometers for every classroom, as well as the items that I had mentioned. And then we move into the cleaning piece that involved health and safety. So ensuring that classrooms were being cleaned regularly with a cleaning log from the custodian, using all of the proper materials and following the cleaning and disinfection procedure manual through our San Mateo County Insurance Group. And then we also, as a reminder, the board approved that air filtration systems would be put in every classroom. So those will be delivered, John will be speaking about the timeline a little bit later. And MERV 13 filters are installed and, and changed at the appropriate nerve walls. Then the MOU also addressed schedules. So Liz will be speaking about that in just a bit, but there are various schedules that are going to be available for sites to be considering over the course of these next couple of weeks. And within that schedule, another option of a learning pod. Now, a learning pod is a situation in which a credential teacher, one of our R C S D teachers, could have students in front of him or her for the day or for half the day, depending on the schedule. And it would allow a time for students to interact with each other, to be in a classroom, to have a positive learning environment, to receive some support from a teacher, but really to supervise and monitor the distance learning opportunities that are happening with the children's classroom teacher. So two types of in-person learning, one is a learning pod and the other is direct instruction opportunities from the classroom teacher. So Liz will be speaking about schedules in just a bit. Student enrollment, we want the primary focus to be students staying with their teacher and certainly staying at their school site. And so with input from parent surveys and principals will be making, will reach, will be reaching out, excuse me, for another commitment survey for parents in order to address what the numbers of students that are interested in coming back on campus in order to balance that with the teacher's schedule as well. So that work will be happening over the next couple of weeks. So for student enrollment, we recognized in the MOU that we will be following the guidelines, which are up to 15 children for one cohort and per, you know, per day, could be up to two cohorts a day, depending on the schedule. And then testing, tracking and tracing, that is very, very important. We have been putting that, we have put that in place over the last few weeks, especially with having our learning hubs with our guest teachers on site and our pilot teachers. So currently, that process has been finalized. We worked out all the tweaks and now we're on our regular rotation with the next, next tracking opportunity for staff being right after the Thanksgiving holiday. We also noted that leaves might still be a possibility for staff members. And so the current RCTA contract already lays out various leaves that are available. And then, of course, the Family First Coronavirus Act, which is still in place until December 30th, hopefully to be extended. But we don't have information on that yet. And then the district did offer compensation for our teachers who will be returning in person. Thank you.
So as Wendy just mentioned, we are currently, right in the moment, working out the schedules for January for the return to in-person instruction. And each school is working with their teachers, with their site councils, with their communities to determine the best approach towards in-person learning with a combination of distance learning options as well. And so what we have done is provided guidelines for the schools to work within. And the, the bottom line is that each school has to provide the minimum number of instructional minutes daily. And this has been in place since the summer when Senate Bill 98 passed. So this is continuing, these number of minutes that hasn't changed. And within that, then we have offered four different possible scheduling options. Option one was the option that we talked about over the summer where we would have a Monday, Tuesday cohort and a Thursday, Friday cohort with Wednesdays as the deep cleaning day between the two cohorts. But very few, if any, of our pilots are actually practicing a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday cohort. They are all practicing an AM and a PM cohort. And so you'll be hearing about that because we do have some of our pilot teachers who are here tonight to talk to you a little bit about what their experiences have been. So within the AMP PM cohort, there are a number of options as well. And so one option is depending again on the number of students who are choosing in-class instruction. There could be a morning cohort with cleaning in between and then a PM cohort. And so both groups would be in-class instruction. Another option would be a morning cohort with in-class instruction with a PM cohort with distance learning. But that distance learning would take place synchronously with the teacher, not, not very much asynchronous work. Or it could be a PM would be the in-class with the AM being the asynchronous and synchronous instruction in distance learning with the teacher. But basically what that is, is two cohorts, one either in the morning or in the afternoon that is in class, with the other being in distance learning, but actually working more directly with the teacher live through, but through the use of the computer. And then, of course, option four is distance learning. So within that, the schools are arranging schedules based on their teachers' preferences in terms of returning or remaining in distance learning and their families' preferences in terms of sending their children back to in-class instruction or remaining in distance learning. And so again, each school will look a little bit different based on the makeup of their, their teachers' desires as well as their family desires. And it's quite a challenge for the schools to be working this out. And that's what they're working on right now with the, and you'll be seeing the timeline in another couple of slides with the goal of having all of this finished by December. So we have, we do have three speakers here tonight who are here to talk about their experiences as pilot teachers. And they've been asked to talk a little bit about what their experience has been and what they have learned. And they've been asked to talk a little bit about what their experience has been and what they have learned from this experience. And we're looking forward to sharing these learnings when we do more planning for January. And they'll also be talking about what some of the challenges have been because we know that we can learn from that as well. So we have Shannon Cody, who is teaching AMPM session up at Clifford with her PM session being her in-class, her actual in-person. We have Mary Khan, who is teaching a special day class at Hoover. And then we have Betty Mom John, who is working at Taft. And so Kyle, you're going to need to promote them into panelists at this time. And then when Mary Khan speaks, we also have a couple of videos from her class that we're going to be showing you. But we'll start with Shannon Cody.
So if you want to unmute or move to panelist?
I think we'd like to move them to panelist so that we can see them as they speak. Thank you.
So they're all in this panelist now?
Shannon, go ahead.
Okay. Well, hi, my name is Shannon Cody and I teach fourth grade gen ed at Clifford. And I'll share with you the reason I was interested in doing the pilot is I was so incredibly frustrated with the challenges some of my students were facing, that I was facing with the distance learning. And that was, you know, meeting my students' needs, the tech issues, the academics, the behavior, the distractions, monitoring the progress and all of that. And my frustration level was at my maximum capacity. And I knew I needed to make a change and I was racking my brain and trying to figure out what else I could do and what I could do differently. And then the pilot was on the table. But I'm not going to lie, I was unsure and we were all in the space that the schools, everything was online. So I really had to take into account my comfort level. And I watched the district's presentation and how we were addressing the pillars, I think, three different times. And, you know, thank you, Michelle and Sarah and Don and Martin and everybody else who starred in that. But I watched that and I thought about my own risk factors and, you know, the people I impact. And I felt safe. I felt comfortable. I felt like this was okay for me to do. And then after that, I thought, okay, well, this is my decision. What are we going to do to make it work? And I was committed to making it work and focusing on the things that I could control to make it work right now and to continue to make it work for all of us. And what I've learned, and this is, you know, probably more for all the teachers out there who are going back in January, and for parents too, but it was a very interesting space to start in November because we, it's like it's the start of your school year, but it's also not. We've been online with the kids. We know them. They know our expectations. But at the same time, it's their first time stepping into a classroom since March. And they were excited and then they talked about that they were nervous and then I was nervous too. And so in that space, I just realized, you know, what we were doing and that we just needed to kind of, I had big plans. We were going to do, you know, all of our make the poster and jump right into all the lessons that we had been doing. You know, and I read the room and just went, okay, slow this down and let's regroup and appreciate the space that we're in. So that was something I learned right away. And then, but in this is to all the teachers out there, it's not like a normal November, but it's also not like August. So I'm finding that we're picking up the pace very quickly. But I had to take a couple of steps back and remember it's the start. They haven't been at school for a long. But that was fun. And as far as, you know, benefits, again, to all the teachers out there, you know, being in person, for sure, it's everything you think it's going to be. And being able to monitor in real time, you know, you forgot the zero in that hundreds place, you know, the progress, that understanding, being able to control for the most part, the distractions. And then it's so much more. It's been the little things that I didn't realize how much I missed. For example, someone's birthday the other day and they sang the birthday song. And I don't know if anyone else has tried to have everyone unmute and do that together. That is hard online, but just like hearing all the kids sing together. Same thing, one of my girls was talking about a journal entry and it was about her pet. And then they all started asking kind of silly questions and then to hear them giggling together. It's just been, I've had a lot of those moments that I've really appreciated that I think I had kind of lost sight of how much I appreciate those things. Another benefit is the most kids we can have is 15. That is a nice, small class. And it's, you know, makes management nice. It means being able to really help the kids individually. And as Liz said, I have half my class in person in the afternoon and the other half is online. And that provides them the opportunity to stay distant if that's what their comfort, their comfort level is right now. And I'm grateful we were able to work that out and I get to keep all my kids. And having that smaller cohort, because I only have half my kids in the morning, that gives the online group so much more time to talk and to interact. And it reduces a lot of that frustration level that I talked about earlier. As far as my challenges, it's honestly my, one of my challenges was a couple of my kids had some transportation concerns. And I've had a lot of help with the district. I think one of them were getting that settled and he's going to be able to join after Thanksgiving. And then the other one, it just isn't going to work. The mom decided for her family right now, we were going to wait and just make it work in January. So we'll have that option. And then the other, my greatest challenge is I can't hear anyone with a mask on. And that's, you know, that's in the grocery store, that's anywhere. So that's one of my challenges. We're working on our public spaces and speaking very loudly and clearly. But that's, that's the challenges and I'll, I'll take it. And I can tell you to everyone here, amount of support I've had as a pilot teacher, and you know, I do feel this way. It's been amazing. And it's the support at the district level, Liz, Wendy, Antonio, and facilities was amazing. Martin, Josh, Dave, the team. My room is exactly how I wanted. And I didn't have a lot of extra furniture in there, but I'm very happy with the way it is and they made it so easy. The support at my site, when I went to Jude and Tiffany and said, I'm thinking about this. They said two things. They said, we want to do what's best for student learning and how can we support you? And then, and I'm saying this part because this is like huge. From my friends and my colleagues at school who were not feeling ready to get back into the pilot or to jump into the pilot, they weren't feeling ready to do it themselves yet, but they were so incredibly supportive of me doing it and helping me any way they could. And my families and it's not just, wasn't just the families who wanted to come back in person, but all my families, the ones who wanted to stay distant and everyone was just so supportive and on board with making it work. And so I want to say thank you. And I know a lot of different comfort levels out there and I respect that. I am so incredibly grateful to be live and in person with my kids again. And I'm so grateful to have kept all my kids and we found a way to make that work. And I, as I know, we all do, I hope that we can keep this going and that we can all stay healthy. So, thank you.
All right. I think that might be leading up to my turn. So, hi, I'm
Mary, let me know when you want me to show the video. So go ahead, please.
Maybe towards the end, I guess. Hi, I'm Mary Khan and I'm a specialized teacher at Hoover. And I wanted to be part of the pilot program because I know that being out of school, out of a school routine can be very difficult for my students as well as their families. So I wanted to help with getting those who wanted to back to school. I generally have nine students and two are participating in the pilot program. I've learned that time flies very quickly in the pilot program. The day just zooms by. My two students are only at school for about three hours, four days a week. Another thing I've learned is how to avoid the dreaded echo that happens when two people have their mics on in the room at the same time. Because we still do our Zoom meets for our home learners at the same time my two students are in the class. Benefits of the pilot program are that a familiar routine is back in place for my two students and their families. The smiles on their faces and getting to see them learn in person. It's really great to be part of this. A challenge, I would say, or just an awareness, is that I'm always concerned about the seriousness of the safety precautions. We keep our windows open and our door open to allow for ventilation. We have air purifiers and are doing our best with our PPE equipment. Shannon said Martin and his team and everybody at the district have been so great in checking in with me weekly to see what we need and whatever I ask for, I get it like the next day. So it's been great. So far, things are going really well for us. And I know I can speak for all of the adults who work in my classroom that we are glad to be part of the pilot program and we are hoping for the best. And I have a couple of cute videos that my parents, so that I can share with you guys. So hopefully Liz can get them to play. Oh, I don't think we can hear the audio. For some reason. Liz, try turning the volume up on your computer.
And unmute.
Oh yeah, you need to unmute, I think. But you can see how he's, there we go. Maybe you can hear it again. Liz, unmute yourself. Barkley, oh, good job. There you go. What are these? That's just Barkley E. Yeah, you can do it. You have to be more direct. There you go. So there you go. That's learning at its best. Can't do that at home. And this is just one of my students. He's just so excited to be back at school and he can just feel it when he's playing this game. So I thought it'd be fun to share that. So that's it. It's great to be part of the pilot program. Thank you.
Betty?
Hi, everybody. See. Okay. Thank you for having me here. And I'm really happy. I just want to just mention again how thankful I am to the district, everybody that's been really supportive with the supplies. It's been incredible. So I can't thank you enough. And I also want to mention that why I want to be part of the program, when I found out and just as the same as the other teachers were mentioning about how difficult it was, you know, being remote. It had some, you know, good points, but you know, having an opportunity to return was incredible. And for me personally, my personality is such that I want to kind of get a head start, just how to get things going. So instead of waiting until January, kind of work out the kinks myself. So that's one of the reasons why I wanted to be there and see my students. So things that we've been learning, I think it's things that the other teachers have mentioned. You know, no matter how much we use technology, it cannot replace a teacher. You know, you're in the moment when a student is not understanding, you know, the algorithm in the computer can't pick up on the facial expression, whether they understand it in the moment or not, whether they're happy, they're kind of sad about a problem or, you know, the teacher can immediately pick up on those cues that the kids are, you know, are giving. Be there for them emotionally, psychologically, academically. It can't be replaced with even the best technology out there. So I really, I'm so grateful that I'm there. So again, I can gauge how they're learning. That's one of the most important things for me. And some of the benefits, I mean, there's so many benefits, but some of them is that I can tell moment to moment what I need to give my students. They love being with their peers. They love being together. You know, even though they're six feet apart, they have their masks on, they're talking to each other and having that connection there. You know, they need that emotional support of their friends. They are, the classroom is much more conducive to learning. They're not as distracted as they are at home because there's other kids, I can hear, you know, remote learning with a sibling, which is fine, you know, it's just how reality is. But being in class, there's less of the distractions and they always miss writing. You know, it's great for their fine motor skill. They're like, oh, my hands are tired, Miss Mom, because I haven't been writing and I'm so happy to be writing again. The, you know, the artwork that they get to share. So they really do miss school and I'm just so happy to be part of that. And the teachers have mentioned so many things that I wholeheartedly agree with. And some of the challenges for me is the actual physical distancing in the class when they're six feet apart. They're talking to each other, helping each other out, doing math problems or whether we're reading a story. But there's not that collaboration, you know, and as a teacher, I've got to make sure that I am also keeping my distance. I put my shield on as I'm walking around the room, just, you know, kind of, you know, like the teacher is going to be coming in in January. You know, I tell my students, make sure you put your shield on when you're going to walk across the room. Also, you know, passing out, distributing supplies, papers, you know, you know, I've got to put the gloves on and then make sure I sanitize my hands, you know, these kinds of things have been challenging. And they can't pick up their book and sit with each other, you know, that's one thing that they love to do. So these are things, you know, you know, that you're more aware as you're teaching in the classroom. We've had a wonderful, you know, librarian, our librarian has been great about distributing books. We've had a very successful program where the kids can now have hard copy books in front of them and read it. And I think once that system is more in place, you know, the kids have more of an opportunity to just read instead of looking at the screen. And so my other challenge is because I'm doing option three, AM with me, PM in the afternoon, I do find that my afternoon, it's because I haven't, I don't see them until 12:30. The engagement, they're not with me in the morning where I'm not with them all day. The engagement level for me is a little bit lower, but that's something I need to work on. I think I've talked to other teachers too, how do we get the afternoon kids where we have them for about two and a half hours? How do we get them in that time to engage them more? Because I'm tired, you know, by 12:30. So, you know, but they're also so excited to see, to see each other, talk to each other. But at the same time, I wish I had them all day. So that's something I'm really working on, reading up on articles, how to engage students in a short amount of time, making sure that that time is very efficient. And my morning class, we're a little more, you know, it's faster paced than the afternoon class, but that's okay. As long as I have less students in the afternoon, less kids online, so I can meet their needs better. But I definitely want to make sure that, you know, we are aware of all these issues. So thank you.
So thank you. I really want to thank Shannon and Mary and Betty for being our pioneers and for our other pilot teachers as well, who are showing us how to make sense of this new world that we're in. And we've heard from you tonight and have a better picture of what is actually happening in the classrooms that we can all learn from as well as make some of our modifications. Some of these learnings take place in January. So thank you again so much to the three of you for being here tonight. So Linda, I don't know, did you want to say anything about this? Or do you want me to just go ahead and just present this as total numbers?
That's fine, Liz. Go ahead.
Yeah. Okay. So this is just kind of an overview of where we are in terms of the district hubs. These are the hubs that are in place right now by school and the grade level that are being focused.
These are the hubs that are in place right now by school and the grade level that are being focused on, as well as information about our partner hubs from Reach and the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA. And where those classrooms are situated. And then John, this is the timeline if you wanted to talk about this.
John, you're on mute.
A wonderful life of this Zoom. I want to say thank you to those three teachers who are doing a wonderful job with the pilot programs. And the timeline that you see before you this evening is where we were, where we started back last week. And you can see that principals are now working with discussing schedules with their teachers who are going to come back in person to determine what that schedule will look like. In turn, then they need the site councils to explain the schedules. And as I had a conversation with one of our principals just recently. It took that principal and their site council three hours. And it was not that the site council was creating the schedules. It was the schedules that the teachers wanted to adhere to and why they wanted to do it that way. And they were really explaining the rationale. Because at this school, the schedules are a bit different at different grade levels. So this is what principals are at different places right now. Last week and this week, they're working on those schedules with teachers and then to move forward and start sharing with site councils. And then we're also having additional training on sanitation and PPE. It's being delivered and completed for all lead and night custodians. And thanks to Martin for putting that together for us. Now, next week is conference week. And you know, during conference week, we have the conferences on Monday and Tuesday. And on Wednesday, it's not a school day for children, neither is Monday and Tuesday. But this is a time when we need to determine the number of custodians that we're going to need each side, depending on the in-person enrollment that we're going to have. So this is very important for us to understand and to put into place as we come back in January for in-person instruction. And then the week of November 30th is really important for our principals because we want them to finalize the schedules for the January return and make sure that all the families who are taking part in in-person learning. And those that are still distance learning at home really understand these schedules. And then we have to continue to configure the classroom setups to accommodate the seating for students to make sure that we're doing our physical distancing. Next slide. And then this is a big due date, December 14th. And the principals do know this. As you all know. We went through this exercise when we started the, the movement toward the pilot programs opening. So each school is going to develop a reopening plan for their school site. Of course, we have, we are the Redwood City School District, so we have an umbrella of the four pillars. We're going to make sure those four pillars are adhered to at each of the school sites. And that's a lot of work that has to be done with the schools and their site councils. Remember that those pillars are something that the health department is looking at very closely. As you recall, when we did our reopening plan for just the pilot program. Liz Wolf had to go back and forth with the county on specifics that they felt needed to be worked on more in conjunction with those four pillars that would meet the approval level at the, with county health department. And so it's very important that we get these plans back for each school site. So that we at the district office can, can look at each of them. Determine if there are questions that we feel the county office of ed is going to ask us. Go back to the principals and say, did you really mean this? Or where is that supposed to be? That's specific because we want to make sure when we come back after the winter break on that January 5th, those plans are at the county office of education. They have reviewed them and they're, hopefully by the end of that week, they go to the county health department. And they send them back to us with saying, move forward starting on January 19th. So it's real, these plans are very, very important. On the week of January 4th. We will definitely finalize the classroom setups and what they look like. The week of January 11th is testing for all our staff who are on campus. I'm encouraging students who are coming back to test. But as you all know, I, I cannot require. Air purifiers will be delivered in the classroom, making sure that we have soap, hand sanitizer, paper towels, masks and all the PPE that's needed on each of the school sites. And then the week of January 18th. We start to open all of our schools in some manner for in-person learning. It's going to look different at each school site. There are different, different grade levels that are participating. You will see that there's AM, PM model. The AM and then a PM where there's children in person in the PM as opposed to the AM. And you'll also see an AM, PM, both in person at school sites that have determined that they want to go in that direction. So we look forward to sharing those plans with you and what they look like. When we definitely get back from winter break. But hopefully we'll have some sense of where we are at each school level on, at our next board meeting. So we can give you kind of an update then. And again, a big thanks to the teachers who came forward tonight. It was, I haven't been to Mary's con's class yet, but Shannon was great. Standing in the doorway and watching her with her students that put their masks and they're really. It was enjoyable to see them interact with her and they were so happy to be there. And the same with, with Betty. I saw her out at Taff. She was waiting for her kids to come and she had, she was standing where they were supposed to stand in their line and so forth. And she was very anxious to, to see them. And as they started coming in, you could see how happy she was. So thank you all so much. I really appreciate it. And now questions for the board, from the board, I should say.
Anybody would like to go first? Oh, there's Maria, okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to say thank you to all the teachers and everyone who has worked so hard on this. It's really nice to see the students at work. I really like the videos of the children learning. And I appreciate the willingness of the teachers to take that step and to try it out and to share their findings with their colleagues and with the rest of us. And I know that Wendy and Liz and everyone has been working really hard to support them. Martin and his staff and facilities. So thank you to everybody who has been working to get our students back and get them learning to the best possible way that we can.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Yeah, I would just add on to what Maria said. First, it was very cool to hear from the teachers. And one of the coolest things is to see students because we haven't seen students for so long. I know last, last week we did, but that just rocks. And I'd like to thank all the teacher for stepping up. They've done a fabulous job. I've been communicating with a number of teachers. And the spirit and the excitement and the can-do attitude is just amazing. It's so inspiring from the teachers and they're so appreciative of facilities. So thank you to all the pilot teachers. It's really wonderful. You can help make sure that when we go back in January, it's seamless. Thank you.
Yeah. So I would like to say thank you very much as well. And a special thank you to Shannon, Mary and Betty tonight for presenting. It's really great to hear from our teachers about, you know, both the challenges that you're dealing with, but also the real opportunities and the joy that you're having with in-person. And then I agree, thank you for all the support that our teachers are getting from facilities and their principals and vice principals and from district staff. So we're all in this together, we know. So this is great. I know that one of the things I talked to Dr. Baker about, maybe yesterday was, you know, right now, we're sort of going through the process of surveying teachers and parents. And I could see particularly as these good stories come out with our pilots and teachers and students being successful in person and being able to do it safely and sort of showing how we can do that and, and people getting more comfort with that. I could see where maybe some of our teachers and our parents and students might change their minds. So I guess we don't need to necessarily talk about that tonight. And I realize there's a lot of moving pieces, but I just want us to have that in the back of our minds that, you know, come January or maybe February, March, there might be some opportunities for additional in-person if teachers are getting more comfortable or parents and students. Of course, it'll have to be, is there room in the classroom? I understand that, particularly with students. But I just hope that we can be a little flexible if we do have some teachers that change their minds. Who would like to come back when they start to see the success building with what we're doing. Because I do agree and I appreciate that, you know, everybody has a different comfort level and a different risk profile. And there's a lot to consider. But I am confident that we can do this safely and we're starting to prove it, right? With our pilots and our learning hubs and that sort of thing. So, you know, thank you to everybody who's working so hard. I really appreciate it so much.
So same here. Thanks to all the teachers for doing a really good job. They're in person and definitely I am very grateful for all those teachers that did step up to do the pilot program. And then again, like Alyssa mentioned, when we do come back in January, perhaps after listening to some of the experiences of the pilot teachers are having. The other teachers, some of the teachers will feel a little bit more comfortable. Cause again, I also do understand for those that don't feel, you know, that are still a little more fearful. But I think everyone is doing an awesome job. It is very good that the teachers are working with those students that need it most in person. And again, the, the only other thing that I was thinking of is with some of the learning hubs or after school programs being in the classrooms. Just, you know, how many teachers we're actually gonna have coming back and is that going to become a problem where we're gonna have to shift things over? I know something the chat was talking about, what happens if during the PM working parents are not able to drop off their kids? So I'm just wondering if, obviously, everybody in the administration office is doing a wonderful job thinking of everything. If we've also, I guess before the surveys go out to the parents to know if they are going to be bringing their students back into the classroom. Are we gonna know for sure whether they're gonna be doing the AM, PM model? Or, you know, which of the models is going to happen before they make the decision? And I think that's it for me.
That will take place, Cecilia. Matter of fact, the school site that I was talking about previously, just a few moments ago, where they're having different sessions. What the principal did is he has a teacher's name and then he has what they're going to be doing. Whether it's total distance at home, then he has other teachers, what they're doing. He's sending that schedule out with his survey that goes. So parents know ahead of time before they determine their selection. And then also Lisa, to your question, it'll probably be dependent upon classroom and site. So the principals have already made that known. What if that were to occur? And then it's, each site will work on it individually. Depending on, for example, if the teacher wanted to stop the distance learning, full distance learning, wanted to do like an AM and then continue with the students who did not want to return in that PM distance learning. That would be the site administrator would start working with that teacher and with those families who are with that teacher. If the teacher starts to become, to feel comfortable to come back. So it'll be, that's something that they always have, they already have in the back of their mind that they're thinking about for what to occur. But I want to thank also Linda for the hubs, for the learning hubs. Because if you know, notice, we do have more learning hubs. And these are Redwood City School District learning hubs. These are not their partner learning hubs. These are our learning hubs. So Priscilla is helping me with the budget to see if I can get a few more. And with that being, once I know that, then we have some schools that are next in line to start up with some learning hubs. So I just want to thank Linda for taking the time for interviewing, for also training the, the new people that are on board with us. Because as you do know, these are similar to our substitute teachers. And they have a bachelor's degree, but they don't necessarily have a teaching credential, but they have a sub-permit, which Wendy, through her office, went through and made sure that they got that through the county office of ed. So very happy for, for them and thank you Linda for that. And we will get some more. It's just that we, I need to work up the figures with, with Priscilla before I say, go to it, start, start bringing them in. Any other questions?
So I just, I want to say especially thank you to Shannon, Mary and Betty for speaking tonight. It was really, really great to hear the excitement in all of your voices and, and the faith and the trust that you have in the district to keep you and the students as safe as possible. And to all of the pilot teachers, I know there's a lot more of you in the audience today too. But I think that you know, for you guys, it's great for you to get back in the classroom, but it also shows the teachers who have been hesitant and the families who are hesitant. How safely this can be done. So I'm hoping that that also encourages more people to come back to the classroom if they feel safer to. So really appreciate that. We do have a couple of speaker cards if we want to take those now. Looking for John now on my screen right now, but we just have two. So again, it's a three minute time limit and I will share my screen with a timer. So we're gonna have Maria Stockton followed by Catherine Stewart. So now that I'm sharing my screen, I can't see. So let me know when Maria's here.
Okay, so she's up and unmuted.
Hey, hi Maria, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I was reflecting on the dedication. We've been hearing all night about teachers, but I was reflecting on the dedication and the hard work of the classified staff that they have been providing during this very challenging and difficult time. Many of our members have worked on sites as well as offsite, dealing with the public providing services that have kept this district afloat. So in, on distant learning as well as all online onsite learning is made possible. Many members made it, made deliveries for food, equipment, materials. Many have fed children three meals a day plus snacks every day, not only to the Redwood City School District children, but to Redwood City children. Many instructional, many people worked and supported the teachers as well as the children online distance learning. So, so many people worked at keeping this district running with the technology needed to teach anything online and or on distance learning. I haven't heard any thanks or any kudos to them pretty much. It's been teachers. And I would hope that the school district and board members really understand without these people, school is not going to be happening. It, it can't go without technology, interacting with the parents from the office. Food service, transportation, all our members pay a very integral part in providing services and support to the school district. I'm going, I took off my notes because now I'm just reading or talking. We understand that the teachers that decided to do pods and pilots got $350, which now has been increased to a thousand. And we also know the teachers coming back in January have been offered up to a little more than $4,000 for coming back. more than $4,000 for coming back. Please understand, our members have been here since July 1st, providing services. Many of them have been interacting with people, being there, open to catching this virus while others stayed home safe and with their families. We never ask for more than what is only fair and equitable. Please understand, we know we're going in and talking about this in MOU, but please don't insult us with something that's far less than what is expected of people who have been keeping this district afloat and having their health and their lives, interacting with those, possibly giving them something that we don't want. Thank you. And thank you especially to Mr. McBride for actually going to sites and interacting with not only administration, but our people, thanking them and asking what they needed. You will be missed.
Thank you, Maria. Catherine Stewart. Catherine, do we have you here?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Okay, I'll, I'll give the rest of my time. I just want to say quickly, thank you very much to being patient and to the board and to John for the many months that you've put into listening to me at these board meetings, commenting over and over again about my nervousness for the whole thing. So I appreciate that. And also, I hope that everything works out. We're going to do full distance until there's a vaccine and that's just our decision. So it doesn't mean that we don't appreciate all the time and effort you're putting into it. And definitely anything we can do to help for those people who will be going back in person, we'd be happy to do. So that's all I want to say and I'll give the rest of my time over.
Thank you, Catherine. So that's all we have for speaker cards. Were there any other board comments or questions? Thank you, Dr. Baker and Liz and Wendy and Linda and just everybody for all the work that has gone in. Just even as far back as, you know, spring, trying to get ready for this school year. It's, it's been a long haul. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. So with that, Dr. Baker, are we ready to move on to 12-2?
Oh, yes, we are. That's great. So I believe you remember, prior to COVID, we were beginning to have conversations with Stanford University in regard to some, a partnership. And we have had partnerships in many other manners with, with Stanford. And many of us have partaken in some of their extension opportunities to administrators and district, district office personnel. But I'm trying to think, Alyssa and Jan, it was this back in?
It was like February, I think.
Was it February or was it Ja? I was thinking January or something like that. Lucy's here, so probably Lucy knows. When we started this conversation, of course, Sequoia Union High School District, they were with us at the table. But it was a partnership to develop what were the needs that each of the school districts were, were facing at this time. And, and it was mental health that we were really concerned with both, both districts. And so Lucy and her team have come back with a project and which we will be able to be part of, along with the Sequoia High School District. And I'm very excited for them to present tonight to let you know what that will look like. So I guess, Lucy, I will turn it over to you at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you all hear me okay? Wonderful, thanks. Well, good evening, Board and Superintendent Baker. Nice to see so many faces. I'm Lucy Wex. I'm from Stanford University's Office of External Relations and Office of Government Affairs. And thank you first for providing some time on your agenda tonight for the Stanford team to come and share a bit more about an effort we've been developing in partnership with district leaders for almost over a year now. So in November of last year, Stanford did make an announcement that about a commitment to explore new opportunities to really deepen the partnerships with local schools in support of K-12 students, staff, families within Redwood City. And then over the following months, as Dr. Baker just indicated, we held a few meetings, a series of meetings with both the high school district and the elementary school district leaders. A lot of other conversations were through those months as we were thinking and really deeply listening. These meetings were held to provide our team with an opportunity for deep listening and to gain a better understanding of needs, mutual areas of interest, and also focus areas where Stanford might uniquely be able to offer support by engaging faculty and other academic centers from across the university. As Dr. Baker, Dr. Baker mentioned, we had a variety of different topic areas that we discussed and thought deeply about. And really through the discussions, a theme emerged focused on mental health. And of course, the research as well emerged to focus us on areas to move forward with. Then in March, of course, COVID became our reality. And while so much has changed and become incredibly dynamic and challenging, we believe our focus on mental health and wellness has become even more needed as we, and also as well as matching data and research support to help answer questions the district has in front of you now. And with that, I'd like to share our first slide. I think hopefully someone, Eliana, do you have that slide to pull up? Kyle, thank you. Kyle, do you have our slide? Not sure if anyone else's.
I know he was, he had them earlier.
I had it, okay. Let me see if I can. No Zoom call is.
Trying this again.
Okay.
Yeah, it looked like from the attendee's side, you could see the little wheel going around and around. It was thinking.
Here.
There we go.
Is that it?
That is it. Thanks a lot, Kyle. So Kyle, we can flip to the next slide. So tonight, we have a, a team here and I'm going to let each of them introduce themselves as we go through these series of slides. And then at the end, we'd love to answer some questions and get some insights and comments from you all. So tonight, our team, we're going to present a plan for a clinical collaborative and research support partnership program that clearly needs a better title or maybe an acronym at this point. But the goal there is based on the joint discussions we've had with both districts is to really launch a three-year collaboration through which the university will, has proposed to deploy programmatic clinical mental health capacity building support and related research resources to help meet the critical needs that you have in front of the schools, educators, students and families of Redwood City. We plan to focus on strategies to deepen the work. As Dr. Baker mentioned, we do have many partnerships right now specifically through the John Gardner Center for Youth and Their Communities and also for Psychiatry Center for Youth, Mental Health and Wellbeing. So both of those teams are here tonight to discuss more about a structure and framework that we're hoping to roll out starting very soon. Next slide, Kyle. So we focus this on two components that we really do see as working together in support of this. And this is the beginning of a, of a larger conversation and effort that we will be mutually working on together with both districts. So the first component is focused on mental health capacity, service and collaborative expansion. So this is with Stanford Center within the School of Psychiatry. So this is the Center for Youth, Mental Health and Wellbeing that will be taking the lead on this first component. And that's really to extend school and community professional development into Redwood City Schools and the surrounding communities. And the models and strategies and resources currently utilized by the center team are deployed in other district, school districts and with community partners throughout Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties will be used to expand into the Redwood City Schools, mental health support and delivery. The other component here will be led by our Graduate School of Education, our John Gardner Center for Youth and Their Communities. And this is a rapid research component of this program. And this program with a rapid research will really focus to address the immediate need, a data needs and answer research questions at the tail end of COVID here in the pandemic. And of course, we know that this is a time where we are all being asked to be very resilient and adaptable and dynamic and navigating things that seem to change every moment, moment. So we believe there's a real opportunity for a rapid cycle of research and analysis that will help the schools make improvements and innovations and that will be really led by you all. So with that, I'm going to turn this, Kyle, if we could go to the next slide, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Shashank Joshi to take this next slide.
Thank you, Lucy. And thank you, Dr. Baker and members of the board and the Redwood City community. We are just so delighted to be with you. I'm going to say a few words about the mental health component. I am Shashank Joshi. As Lucy said, I am a psychiatrist and pediatrician. I'm a dad. I'm a baseball coach, except not this spring. And I'm a professor in psychiatry and also in the School of Education by courtesy. And we've had collaborations with the communities here in East Palo Alto, Redwood City, East Menlo Park and San Mateo County more broadly for almost 15 years. And most recently, we have been in partnership with Santa Clara County as part of the Mental Health Services Act. And we've learned a lot. So in that work, what we've done is we've taken our knowledge about best practices and school mental health, not only for supporting students, but in particular for supporting teachers, for building teacher versatility and being able to reach and teach every student, particularly when there's a mental health concern that is getting in the way of their educational progress. So using evidence-based programs like the Cognito at Risk for Elementary and Middle School Teachers, Youth Mental Health First Aid, and a number of others that have been shown to be useful in other districts. And based on some of the stakeholder meetings we've had with the Redwood City School Community, we are proposing to start with first, in partnership with our, our brothers and sisters there at the Gardner Center, we'll be assessing what's happening right now in mental health collaboration. And we're going to work to enhance the things that are already working well. And this is going to be, as I said, informed by the Gardner Center's Need Assessment Efforts, which have been ongoing, but they're going to be a bit more focused now on this project in terms of capacity building. And then the second point there is, in collaboration with community partners, we're going to be supporting efforts to build school capacity by, again, enhancing teacher training, increasing teacher versatility, bringing in and supporting the social emotional learning initiatives that are already going on and then bringing in those that have been shown to be successful in neighboring districts and in Santa Clara County. We're going to be focusing on school-based wellbeing services and suicide prevention. And I say suicide prevention, I realize you're all in the K-8 district. I don't have to tell the middle school teachers and parents here that, you know, mental health concerns are presenting earlier and earlier. And so while it may be true that in the younger grades, kids may not be presenting with thoughts of self-harm, the need to link social emotional health, academic health and behavioral health are very intertwined. Mental health is part of overall health. Children have to be healthy enough to learn. We want them to be able to recognize signs of distress early so that they can reach out for help before it becomes a crisis or an emergency. And finally, in collaboration with the Sand Hill Foundation and other community partners and funders, Stanford contributors will partner to expand the capacity and coordination of youth-serving mental health supports, including the creation of an All Cove site in partnership with the local community. And to speak more about All Cove and some of the other components of the psychiatry department's initiative, I'm going to pass it on to my colleagues, Vicky Harrison. And are you guys up next or am I going to pass it over to Kristin?
Amy's next.
Amy, okay. My colleague, Dr. Amy Gerstein, who's the Executive Director of the Gardner Center for Youth and Their Communities.
Amy.
Thank you, Shashank. Well, it's wonderful to be here tonight and to see so many familiar faces and names. The Gardner Center, as most, many of you know, the Gardner Center is a research and policy center that's based in the Graduate School of Education. And we've been in close partnership with the, the community in Redwood City for nearly 20 years, actually 20 years. That's how old our center is and we've been in partnership from the beginning. Over the last 12 to 15 years, part of our work has really focused more on how we could provide actionable research to support the district. And to that end, we've done a lot of work with the community schools. We did some work in trying to, in partnership with Patty Ortiz and Antonio Perez to think more about the student study teams and other support services that are happening at the schools. So we are excited to have an opportunity to deepen our work and to have people that are dedicated to this community. And, and so to that end, Kristin Geiser, who's here with us tonight and has been doing research in the community for a number of years. And Brandon Balzer-Carr will be our two lead researchers. And Brandon is currently leading a COVID Needs Assessment Study in the community and will be coming to you with some of our findings very soon. And so that's a great example of our partnership and our hope to be able to provide insight into the kinds of questions that folks have. And we heard about that from Dr. Baker and others in the community who said, "We know that folks are struggling, but we don't know exactly how," and wanting more data. So that, that's the kind of thing that we will do. As Shashank said, we will be working closely with our colleagues and friends in the Center for Youth, Mental Health and Wellbeing so that we can find ways that our research efforts can be complementary to what it is they're thinking about and planning. In general, we are also looking forward to having a more dedicated role so that we can support district leaders and principals and strategic decision-making. And we really expect that, once we have the vaccine and we're all back in action, there'll be effects of COVID and what we've been experiencing. And so we want to know how we can best understand those and support the district to get after that. So I'm now going to, oh, next slide, please, Kyle. So our plan is to have a core leadership group that will oversee the project and to meet it periodically. And that'll include, we hope, the leadership of both districts or certainly key staff as well as key members of our teams from the School of Medicine, from the Graduate School of Education and from Lucy's office, the Office of External Relations, including community engagement and government affairs. So we're actually meeting as a, to kind of officially launch right after Thanksgiving. And we're excited about that. And we've had conversations with Crystal Leach and others at the high school district. And we know that this is going to be a really terrific collaboration. Now I'm going to pass this back to my colleague and friend from the Center for Youth, Mental Health and Wellbeing, Vicky Harrison.
Thank you, Amy. And we can advance the slide. So my name's Vicky Harrison. I'm the Program Director at the Center for Youth, Mental Health and Wellbeing. And I'm here with our Center Director, Dr. Stephen Adeltheim. And I'm just going to close up our presentation, just talking a little bit about the staffing. We're really going to help coordinate the whole effort out of our center. We're going to have the team from the Gardner Center that you just heard from, as well as our center team. And we're looking to actually hire a position, a half-time dedicated position for this project. And they'll be really facilitating all of the workflow, managing responsibility for milestones and deadlines and just keeping things moving, which often in big projects like this is a big part of the, the challenge of getting something from beginning to end. So we will be providing that role and bringing in people as needed. So I think some of the first steps will really be hearing from your community what you think is needed and then it'll be pulling the right stakeholders together and we'll help make those linkages. You can move to the next slide. So this is just a listing of So this is just a listing of the team, the core leadership that we have. I think six out of the eight names here are with you tonight. So we'll be blending all of these various schools from our university together to help really support your district. So with that, I think we're ready to answer any questions anyone has. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for being here with us. Board, would you like to go ahead with questions?
I don't have questions, but I do want to thank the team for all they're doing to assist the Redwood City youths with the mental health support. So I do really appreciate everything that everyone is doing. So thank you very much.
And I would also echo those same feelings. It's great to see you, Amy. I haven't seen you in a while. You're right. It's been from the beginning that you guys have been partnering with Redwood City. So it's good to see that the partnership continues, and I am really excited to hear about this program because we have heard for quite a few months now about the struggles that the children in our district are having, especially, as you mentioned, the middle schoolers who are thinking of some harm and are depressed and just having a hard time coping. I mean, as adults, we have trouble, and I know, and just the little ones, how they express it in different ways. So I'm hoping that this will be a program that can help us with that. So thank you all for taking time out of your busy schedule to be here with us today and for helping our families and our communities and our students.
Dennis has a question.
Hi. This is so exciting. Thank you, thank you, thank you. As everybody said, this is such a huge issue and keeps everybody awake at night. So we really appreciate you taking this on. I had a couple of questions. If I'm a student, what am I going to see? How's that look? Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I can take...
Go ahead.
A first start at that. So thank you, Mr. McBride. I think, you know, right now, what I would say is, on the center side, we have some ideas based on the work that we've done in the high school district. But what it's going to look like for students, I think, is going to depend on a couple of things. First of all, we need to do a needs assessment, you know, with the partnership of Gardner, and we need to find out what the students are really needing. We have some ideas based on work in other districts with similar demographics. But for example, you may see that in the beginning, our work begins with not only doing, understanding the needs of the students, but also understanding the needs of the teachers. Building capacity means we're going to enhance the versatility of teachers, not to train them as mental health clinicians, but to actually expand their already wonderful skill set for just being trusted adults. There are actually curricula that have been shown to increase teacher self-efficacy in the classroom because teachers were part of the research design. So one piece is, I think, teachers may feel like they have an enhanced skill set to be able to be with the students who may be having distress and to be able to intervene and have conversations on a more upstream basis before there's a crisis. So you may see, you may see different sorts of activities happening in a classroom. You may see social-emotional learning activities happening in a classroom that, again, may be part of a structured set of activities or curriculum that teachers would have a lot of say in, you know, selecting. And this, again, will be based on first doing some needs assessments. I think for students overall, we would want to get a sense for how easy is it for them, not only to access mental health on the school site, but do they have the language and do they have the knowledge of, hey, if I'm worried about myself or a friend, how do I tell my teacher? Children in the K through three, K through four ages often don't have the language of mental health. So by bringing in social-emotional learning and by linking it with their academic learning, they're going to be able to develop this vocabulary, to be able to know what it is around, you know, what is normal, what's healthy, and what if I'm worried about my friend? So you may see more conversations happening just around simple concepts like, what does it mean to be healthy? And we include mental health in that. So I think that's what you might see initially. And I would invite Amy to maybe add to that.
Thank you. I think that it's important, the way Shashank mentioned, that our capacity-building efforts will involve the adults, that will involve the teachers and administrators, and I think that's super important. Part of what we will be doing is trying to identify what the needs are, where the assets are in the district, and how to make sure that this is experienced by youth and the teachers and other adults in the system as a kind of seamless web of support. And so I think it's hard to know exactly how it'll be experienced by students because we're, as Shashank said, we need to do the needs assessment first. But our hope is, given that our familiarity with your data already, we'll be able to identify opportunities for moving in and providing more intensive support.
I will also say, to just finish that thought, thank you, Amy. Part of what we've asked the university's support for in this three-year project is to be able to provide some direct clinical service. So, you know, on an as-needed basis and in partnership with the sites, we would want to support the mental health staff on the ground, and in particular for those kids for whom there's the greatest concern, where it's often difficult to be able to, like, get a quick expert clinician assessment or a psychiatric assessment. That is part of what we would be set up to do, so that at the school site, we'd be able to provide that support, connect with the parent, connect with the administration if there is a need for, you know, either an emergency assessment, a hospitalization, et cetera. That would be an additional part of our intervention. Again, with the readiness at the site, the sites that are, you know, feel like they want to pilot that based on the needs assessment we do. And that's the model that we've used with other districts, based on the needs on the ground. You know, obviously, every site has its own subculture and its own set of needs and its own expertise. So the first part of this is really getting to know the sites, listening, being present, and understanding what the needs are.
Thank you. That was perfect. That took it from a slide into an actual picture you can leave with. That's very exciting. So Amy, it's been a long time since we've seen you. But Dr. Baker always reports back when he has meetings with you and talks glowing about what a great partner you are. So it's a great chance to thank you for your many, many years of working with us. So thank you. And then to Lucy, thank you for putting this all together. This is really exciting. This is like the coolest thing I've heard in a long time. So thank you. And that's all I had.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. That's hugely kind of you. Thank you.
There's a question in the chat that I wondered if I should just speak to really briefly, which is regarding that, will this touch staff? Will this breach and build staff capacity? And I want to acknowledge that it will, that when Amy described in kind of this web of support that we would hope students would experience more of, staff would be included in that. We know they interact with them from the moment they arrive on campus. And so we don't know what exactly that looks like. It will emerge more in the context that's been described to you, but they are part of the ecosystem, and so they'll be part of the work.
Well, and if I could jump in as well. I'm Steve Adeltheim. I work with our center as well, and I'm excited to be part of this effort. You know, we haven't spoken about families directly yet either in terms of impact, and I just want to be sure that, you know, that as we move forward, we're also, you know, assuring everyone, we want to really look at the kind of support that families need as a whole. I think part of our hope is, as we do the assessment, to be able to incorporate the thoughts and needs of parents and family members as well. And as we build out these broad supports for, you know, our young people, we want to be able to ensure that we're working with schools closely and families of your students to be able to sort of, be able to support everyone's capacity to be able to meet the needs of our students more effectively from a mental health perspective and from a whole child perspective as well. So thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa. Yes, I want to say thank you very much. I have the opportunity to meet with Amy on a regular basis through the Redwood City 2020, and Lucy and I have known each other...
Lisa, it's hard to hear you.
Oh, is it? Okay. Is that better?
Yes, it's a lot better.
You know what? I was leaning back from my computer, so I need to... I usually have such a loud voice, people don't have a hard time hearing me. Anyway, I just want to say thank you very much. Amy has been such a partner the Gardner Center has for such a long while through the Redwood City 2020 and directly working with us and community schools and other places. So Amy, thank you so much. It is nice to be able to publicly thank you for all your supportive years. And Lucy, I also want to give a shout out to you because I know you've always been a booster of our Redwood City schools, and I think you're really helping make this important connection with Stanford. We were excited when you came to us, and I think Janet and I are the ones that have been in on the meetings. And yeah, there's been a lot of meetings where you had a lot of different people from Stanford come, and we really did do kind of an overview, and then you took all of what we were saying back and did a deeper dive, and I think that really helped us. And, you know, mental health is something that we've talked a lot about in our district that we have a lot of the pieces, but we really could use some assistance in terms of that web that you're talking about and really identifying in a more detailed way on a site-by-site basis, what is the needs assessment and how do we support students, teachers, and all of our staff? And I do think that's important. It is our classified staff, our instructional assistants, our office managers, others who, you know, our food service, our bus drivers, because they all have, and they all interact with our students. And sometimes they're the most important ones, right? Because they're the ones that have those conversations on the bus with the student on the way to school or back home. So we know that. So I'm really excited about this. I feel like I have a lot of questions, but I'm not even sure what to ask. But I know that once you get the project timeline a little bit more defined and get this person on board and we start to get a sense of what it looks like, I have confidence that it'll, you know, really be helpful for us. So thank you. And we'll have to have some, you know, periodic check-ins, I think, at the board level, and I know the community will be excited to hear about this as well. So thanks to all of you who took time. I know you guys are all so busy, all your titles and your different programs you're involved with. So thank you for spending time with us tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you so much. We've been looking forward to this. So pleasure is ours.
Indeed. Thank you very much.
I don't know if we have other board members. I can't see everybody on my screen right now. So if you haven't spoken and would like to, just type in. But I do want to say thank you too. It's so great to see you guys again. I know, Amy, we've seen you at 2020, and Lisa, Lucy, I've seen you around too. But it's a really exciting partnership to have. Really, you know, we've been talking about mental health for a long time and the need in our district, you know, and then COVID happened. And so that just, you know, impacted it so much more than we ever imagined. So we have a long way to go, and I'm really, really looking forward to seeing how things move forward in the coming years. So looking forward to hearing from you guys again at the next check-in when we can.
Janet?
Yeah.
Amy, I have a question regarding the assessment, and I know you just finished that last piece, the survey that you went out and did regarding COVID. We were talking a bit about it the other day.
Yeah.
Will any of that information, will you utilize any of that since that had a lot of our parents respond to that?
Yes. So for those of you that are not aware, in part through Redwood City 2020, but also largely from Dr. Baker's leadership, we have been conducting a needs assessment in Redwood City and North Fair Oaks that's really focused around basic needs and how these kinds of issues have been affected by the pandemic. So we're looking at issues like food insecurity and housing stability and financial stress and wellness in a total sense, both in terms of physical and mental health, and many other things. And this survey that we constructed was administered in Spanish and English, and we have 1,400 responses, and at least a third of them are in Spanish. And we are able to, it's anonymous, but we're able to figure out either by zip code or we're asking people sort of across streets where they live, so we can try to do some mapping of particular areas in the community that need extra support. So we will be able to do that, and we had, I think, over 400 responses came directly from the district sending out the link to the survey. So we'll definitely feed that in because it's relevant, and we're in the throes of analyzing that data now.
Great. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Sure.
Any more questions from anyone? Don't lose it. Well, Lucy, Amy, and the team, thank you so much for coming to the board meeting tonight. Really appreciate it. And also look forward to moving forward with this project and getting it off the ground. So really excited, real excited. So thank you so much.
It's our pleasure. It's our pleasure.
Thank you all. And if you do have any questions in the coming weeks or ideas that pop up, feel free to send them my way, and I can help you a conduit to the broader team that's here today. And so it's just my name, lucy.wicks@stamford.edu. Thank you all, and I really do appreciate the dedication that all of you have given to this community, especially through this really dynamic time. So thank you. We're here rooting for you. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay. That is, so we're on 12.3, Discussion of Board Policy 4116.
Thank you, everyone. Once again, nice to see you. So I do want to say thank you to Janet Lawson and Alisa McAvoy on the Board Policy Committee. We were able to meet, and tonight I'm bringing to you Board Policy 4116, Probationary and Permanent Status for Specifically Certificated Employees. And so I do want to say upfront that I'm bringing to you the board policy specifically, but I am going to retract the ARs. We do need to reconvene back with the committee. I do want to take another look at that. So tonight, I would like to focus specifically on the board policy. So this board policy is an update through CSBA, California School Boards Association. And as you can tell from the attachment, it needed some work. Quite frankly, there was a very small section, a very short section of the board policy. And so the new updated version clearly lays out more discreet language regarding the probationary period of certificated personnel and the district's responsibility to communicate future employment to that particular employee and the process in which that happens. Now, all of this is actually currently in place as our current practice, but this board policy will update and be able to communicate to our employees exactly how that occurs through ed code. So you can notice the ed code markings throughout this entire section. There's nothing more district-specific that we're doing. We follow ed code, and so therefore it notes the March 15 notices if we indeed need to non-reelect and the manner in which we do so. So I wanted to open it up for discussion. This is a first read and hear from you if there is anything that you would like to discuss in regards to this particular board policy.
Lisa, and I've seen this, so I don't know if anybody else has questions. Alisa, did you want to say something? No?
I think it looks fine for me.
Same for me. And I want to thank you ladies for being on the committee. I know it's a lot of work, and I do appreciate you being there and doing all that. And thank you, Wendy, as well.
You're welcome.
And I only had a question for the AR. And since that's going to be moved to another board meeting, I'm fine with the BP. Thank you.
You have a question on the AR. Feel free to email Wendy, and then we could maybe address that in our policy committee and make sure we have an answer for it, if that works for you.
Yes, Cecilia did a great job sending me her comments this afternoon.
Oh, perfect. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. And again, when it comes forward to us, the board will be approving the Board Policy. We don't actually approve the ARs. But we'll take a look at those again, too. Nothing? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do, I love that committee. Honestly, it's, I think, probably my favorite committee that I sit on. So I'm happy to do it. And Alisa and Wendy are great. We always have a good time. Dennis, we have a great time talking policies, I'm telling you.
See, I think one of my proudest moments is I've avoided that for 17 years.
Yeah, you have.
And I started it and have kept away from it ever since.
All right. So that was just a discussion items. We're on consent. Do we have a motion to approve?
We've moved.
Was that Alisa?
Yes, I moved.
Dennis, second.
And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Chris Marquez?
Aye.
Felicity Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy? President Lawson?
Aye. Okay, item 14.1, Annual Developer Fee Report.
Good evening. This report that's presented to the board tonight is the Annual Developer Fees Report for fiscal year 2019-20. So it's a government code requirement for us to present to the public the amount of developer fees collected and expended and what projects were spent for. So we began with 9.3 million in fund balance for 2019-20, and we collected almost 1 million for the fiscal year and expended 3.7 million, and primarily for the Hoover Construction and Modernization Project. We closed the year with 6.6 million in ending balance. And we made this report available to the public since November 4 in compliance with the 15-day posting and report availability requirement. So we have not received any questions from the public since then. But so I would want to know if there's any questions from the board.
Are any questions? So it's an action item, right? So we do need to approve this. There's a motion?
So moved.
Dennis?
Second.
And the roll call vote, please?
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Chris Marquez?
Aye.
Felicity Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Thank you. 14.2, Second Reading and Approval of Board Policy 0405 on Equity.
Yes, thank you again. So tonight, I'm bringing back to you the Board Policy that we spoke about at a previous board meeting in regards to equity. And I want to thank Dr. Linda Montez, our Assistant Superintendent of ELD and Equity, for participating in our second Board Policy Committee meeting. She brought a great lens to this addition, so I want to thank her for that. As you can see in the Board Policy presented to you tonight, the items that were changed are in bold. And I do want to point out a few key points from our last first read. And that is that we wanted to ensure, based on feedback actually received from the public through emails and through the conversations and our work with NUA, that we, the district is committed to provide additional supplemental resources for our most vulnerable students that include local, state, and federal funds. And that we also recognize that we will investigate and implement options to ensure all students, especially students with opportunity gaps, are able to participate in and complete extracurricular and curricular courses that lead to college preparation programs. So that statement was enhanced from the last time that you were able to, that you saw this Board Policy. So those were the two key pieces. I do want to add a third one. Comparisons regarding program evaluations will be made between all students and representative groups to address opportunity gaps that exist. That's really digging deeper down into data than we may have already, or being very explicit about that in the comparisons. And so that is the key features for the changes from the last read. I do also want to point out that in the Board Policy Committee, we did recognize that we have to form a committee to write the ARs. The ARs currently don't exist through CSBA for this particular Board Policy. And so Dr. Montez offered to spearhead that committee, thank you, Linda, and help us with that work so that we can have a systematic plan in place that constitutes our ARs. So that was the update. Thank you so much for the feedback. We really took heart to what you said last time and what the community stated. There were some great points. And so we hope that the language that we change strengthens this policy to make it even better for students.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Back when we talked about this in October, there was kind of a sense from the community that this is something new. And Linda Montez and I had a discussion, and she pointed out, rightfully so, that, you know, we've always had LCAP funding. It's been included and funded above and beyond for English, draw a blank.
English language.
Help me, Linda.
Foster youth, the English learners, economically.
Sped foster youth. That's not new. And then we also have been funding community schools, Title I funds, Title III funds, and migrant ed funds. So we've already been doing quite a bit. And in October, I don't think that came out.
Yeah, thank you, Dennis, for mentioning that. I also think that some of the comments we got from the community actually recognized all that we were doing and felt like we could strengthen our policy by acknowledging those. So I do agree. I think we're doing a lot. And part of it is, you know, there's always room to do more. And I think this will help kind of be a guiding light as there's, you know, board member changes or staff changes, or, you know, we bring on new people. So I'm excited about this. And then one of the things to enhance what Wendy said about our spots on an equity committee is the committee who could help put together the ARs and maybe further our equity work could be composed of a couple of parents. Because we know we have some parents who are really interested in this, along with a couple of teachers classified, to really, you know, deepen the work that we're already doing. So thank you, Dr. Montez, for agreeing to help us with that.
Of course.
Because I do remember how long it took. Remember, it took years. We don't have years. Years to get the wellness ARs. I don't know if you remember that. Because I was a part of that effort. We've done a couple rounds on that. So sometimes we gotta, we can stay focused.
So I've reached out to Dr. Yvette Jackson to help lead that. And I spoke with Dr. Baker about this. So that would be really exciting to have her join us. So we'll hear more about the plans. I'll speak with her, meeting with Dr. Baker hopefully soon, and then we'll be able to share that out. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add to what Dennis mentioned. I think that we have had all of that always at the forefront. And I think we put students at the center. And I know that Dr. Baker especially has always had equity in mind when making decisions and serving all our students. And Liz has also, and Linda and everybody, Wendy. So although we're putting it in writing and changing a few words, I think we've always had it there. Maybe not as precise as we would like it, but this would just make that one more step. As Elisa said, when we're all gone, maybe someone else can remember and read it and say, oh, that's what they meant. So thanks, guys, for working on it.
Yeah, I would add, I just think it's really important to have, of course, you know, we know that we've been working on this, but the future, the boards that come after us and the staff, also, we want to make sure that that is clearly spelled out, what the expectations are at this point. So if there's no other questions or comments, is there a motion to approve? I saw Lisa say so.
My microphone is acting up.
So Alisa, do you have your phone on also? I think you're echoing. Okay, so Alisa said it's removed.
Second.
That was Cecilia. Okay. And can we have a roll call vote?
Chris McBride?
Aye.
Chris Marquez?
Aye.
Felicity Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. All right, moving right along to report from board members and superintendent. Would somebody like to go first? Does anybody have anything to report on?
Oh, I'll do it. Normally, I don't have anything, but today I have something. So first of all, I wanted to say thank you to Michelle and Jorge and that whole team because they've been doing a tremendous job, as you heard from Amy, putting out information to our families, not only about our school, but about resources. And, you know, just with the same graphics and stuff. So for all those parents and community members, it says, we don't put out enough stuff. I think that they're doing a really good job. I also want to say thank you to Kyle, Wendy, and them for helping me collect the books that the Friends of the Redwood City Library donated to our school district. Some of our staff were actually there and picked up several boxes ahead. And we still had more. So it's kind of like what Alisa did with the St. Carlos Library. So thank you for doing that. I know you guys are all busy, but I think that our students will benefit from that. And thinking of seeing students, I got a chance to pop into three sessions of the Author Illustrators Fair from Orion and Mandarin Immersion. And it was so great to see the children talking and asking questions. And it was just exciting to see them. And the Mandarin students practicing, I was really glad to see that as well. And then just talking to parents about their concerns about returning or not, and what's best for their families. And I have to say that they really appreciate that we give them options and that they don't have to take their kids out of the district, that they have the different choices as well. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Dennis.
Yeah, thank you. So I also attended the Orion Mandarin Immersion Book Fair. And I thought it was really great. I mean, it's obviously not as good as when you're in person, and you get all the energy and things. But given we can't do that, I thought they did a fabulous job. And then I had a meeting with Peter Sigh from the Soprano Organization to get information for the Workforce Housing Project for a meeting we had with KNN. And then we had a workforce subcommittee meeting with Blake Bone, who you all know, Yvonne Holm with KNN, which are our public finance advisors, Dr. Baker, Priscilla, and Lisa and myself. And that was very good. And then Dr. Baker, Lisa, and myself then had a meeting with Dennis Wolver Kelly. And we got introduced to another superstar attorney from then. And we had Janet Mueller and Lauren on there. So that was very productive. And so we're working for that. And then last night, we had our Measure U meeting. And to refresh people's memory, that's the Parcel Tax Committee. And they approved their annual report last night. And should give a big shout out, using Warren Cedar's term, to Olivia, Priscilla, and Patty Knight for all their support. They, when you get that report, you'll get it soon. It's a massive document with, I mean, it's just crazy the amount of information in there. And they worked so hard and just did a wonderful job. And they have such a great attitude. And that's all I have.
Can you hear me okay? Just have to lean forward. All right. So yeah, in addition to what Dennis said about the couple of workforce housing committee meetings we've had, I just want to add that I think we're making some really good progress with the last couple of meetings we've had. So hopefully, we'll come to the whole board with some additional information soon. And then also, just as a reminder, we are going to go forward with the Workforce Housing Survey. And Dr. Baker, when is that going out again?
We were hoping to get it out before winter break, but I don't know if we're going to have it back in time.
Yeah. So anyway, it'll be going out, as you said, hopefully before winter break. So maybe in January, we'll have an opportunity to update the board more. But I just want to emphasize that we're doing a lot behind the scenes, our committee. So we'll keep you posted and hopefully have more to say soon. Let's see, policy meetings, of course. Janet and I attended a wellness committee meeting. And we, oh my gosh, how many people were on that Zoom call? It was, it was the most, I think, we've ever had at a wellness committee. So that's the silver lining, right, with Zoom, more people are participating. But we had most of our mental health providers on that call. So we got to hear about the various things they're working on and some of their challenges and all of that. So it was a really good conversation, I think. And I think it was nice for the partners to sort of be together and get to hear from one another, because a lot of them are working at, you know, at different sites. And they might kind of know of each other, but not know what they're doing. So I thought that Andrea did a really good job organizing that meeting. And then Michelle Griffith also was attending. So that was really good, because she was able to kind of represent the toesets. And then, let's see, I attended the Hoover Coffee, which I thought was just so good. The parents had so many good questions and comments and really thoughtful thinking around, you know, the pandemic and their kids and in-person and remote learning and all that. So that was a very good coffee. I really appreciated everybody who attended that. And then, let's see, Dr. Baker and I met with the Mandarin Immersion community. Catherine Rivera was leading the conversation, but Dr. Baker and I were there to support. And they also had a lot of good questions. And I think we were able to help answer some of those and make them feel a little bit better about the direction that we're going. And let's see, I've had a number of CSBA committee meetings. And then, of course, just, I know many of us are on the San Mateo County calls and the county calls. And those are always very informative. And I do want to say that I feel like our district is really doing a lot of the different things. I mean, it's funny, you hear from different districts, and we're all at different phases. But I feel like we are, we are really moving forward in a lot of really good areas with our learning hubs and our pilots, getting ready for January. So thank you for all the leadership and all the staff who are working so hard to make that happen.
Let's see, Cecilia, did you have anything?
It's trying to have me.
No, I can't tell if she's in meeting or not.
I think she is. She's trying.
Are you guys talking about me?
I was.
Sorry, my connection, it just, all of a sudden, you guys went, so, no.
Okay. Oh, she's muted again. Okay. Let's see. So yeah, I think everything I had was covered, except I did this week participate in an interview with the Induction Leadership Committee for the accreditation process for induction. And just a huge shout out to Erin Kakos and Michelle Griffith for all their work and Wendy and getting all of that set up. It's been a huge process. So I think it's done as of today. Is that right? Yeah.
Wendy's going to actually say something about it. We got a response today. Oh, that's.
That's all I have.
And everything for me has been already mentioned. So Wendy, why don't you talk about the induction piece that we learned about today?
Thank you, John. So for those of you that may not know, our induction program is a two-year district-supported program in which teachers who have earned their preliminary credentials, so fresh out of their credential program, get hired with our district specifically and, and have mentors that are our district teachers that work with them over a two-year period for a reflective process to learn about our district and our initiatives and the equity practices that we've been working on specifically. I know the board heard the presentation last week, which is so timely. So we had the site accreditation team here virtually Monday, Tuesday, and then had our final report today. This is a seven-year cycle process, and it's, it's equivalent to a wedding, quite frankly, where there's a lot of coordination, a lot of behind-the-scenes work. Yet hopefully those that arrive, which is the accreditation team, look at it as flawless. With that, we, I'm very, very pleased to announce that the accreditation team gave us just glowing remarks. We met all criteria, which is fantastic. When I walked into being the accreditation director eight years ago, I came in filling very, very large shoes from Chris Hildebrandt. And she handed over the program to me and said, we just got a clear accreditation. Now it's your turn. And it was a lot of pressure, I have to be honest. But over the last couple of years with Erin Kakos and Michelle Griffith then taking the charge, it was so amazing to hear the feedback from the committee. I do want to point out a few key pieces just for tonight, and a full report will come soon and the formal announcement on January 28th. But they, the committee stated that they were most impressed by the support of the board and the LEA for the induction program. There was clear dedication. As the public may or may not know, districts have a choice to offer an in-house induction program in which candidates can really benefit from local mentors, usually at their school sites, that can help them through the process. And the board supports financially the mentors that assist. And so through that process and just the anecdotal support, attendance at the colloquiums, the attendance at the orientation, so the board's always been very supportive. And Dr. Baker had a glowing presentation, apparently, with the accreditation in which he spoke highly of the teachers that come out of the program with all of this amazing support and new tools in their toolbox to assist students. And more importantly, they stay either in our district or they stay in the teaching profession, which is the whole point really of this program, is to offer that extra support. So that was point number one. Another piece that they mentioned was they're thoroughly impressed with our staff development team and how the staff development team, of course, supports all teachers, but has an additional layer of support for our new teachers out of the program. And sometimes it takes an extra step or two to make the connections between what is currently happening in a well-seasoned teacher's classroom versus a new teacher. So the access to our professional development team. Another benefit, the third, was the organized and clear program that's laid out for our candidates. It was well-thought-out. We're not wasting anyone's time. We know everyone's really busy. So it's looking at really succinct learning opportunities for candidates and mentors as well. The consistent feedback cycle that mentors and candidates receive was also noted as a, as a key indicator. And then most importantly is actually the positive impact that the program has made on the competencies of new teachers and how it was so apparent because they interviewed those that had completed the program and was in their third year. So now that it was all finished, you know, what was the really end result? And so the two main pieces about the induction program is proficiencies on the California standards of the teaching profession and the reflective support from a mentor. And so overall, once again, we had glowing feedback and we met the accreditation without any stipulation. So I'm so impressed. And I do want to say thank you again to Michelle Griffith and Erin Kakos, who pulled it all together. They were the conductors of the wedding and the wedding was amazing. So anyway, thank you, everyone. And thank you also for Janet Lawson. She is our board representative for the induction committee. And so that was another comment, by the way, Janet, they were thrilled that, that you actually sit on the committee to lead influence and perspective toward new teachers. So thank you again.
Thank you. That is fantastic news. Really great. Dennis, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, first, congratulations. That's fabulous. I used to have the position Janet did. And I just want to emphasize that while they're here two and a half, three days, you started working like eight months ago and your whole staff has been working pretty much like half-time to do this. So I just think it's fabulous and congratulations to your team.
Thank you.
Yeah, to that note, I know that I have had this accreditation on my calendar for a year. I know that it's been that long that, long ago that Wendy said to me, make sure you put this down. So it's been, it's been in the works. Thank you. Okay, is that it for board superintendent reports, I guess?
Yep.
Okay, my agenda. 16-1, information on San Mateo County Investment Fund. Any questions or comments? None? Okay. Correspondence? None, it looks like. Okay. Business, other business or suggested items for future agenda? Okay. Moving right along. Changes to the board agenda schedule. Okay, so that brings us to the end of our agenda. Our next meeting.
Before we adjourn, could I make a plug for somebody?
Yeah, just one moment, Dennis. I'm sorry. On the agenda of the, the board agenda calendar, we should just mention we are going to have that December 11th meeting. I don't think it's on the calendar yet.
Yeah, it's at the end of our agenda, but correct. We'll have the December 11th board reorganization.
Yeah, just in the morning. It'll be a short reorganization and the oath for our new board member, just because we have to do it in a certain window and that's what worked. So anyway, December 11th at 8:30. Okay, sorry about that. Sorry for the interruption, Dennis.
Yeah, so that, actually, that's what I was going to say. But what I wanted to say is I've had many conversations with Mike Wells. And he's a great person and he'll be an awesome board member. And I'm thrilled at the quality he brings to the board. I'm really, really pleased. So I didn't want us to go by that without making sure people know that on December 11th, we're really going to get a quality board member. Thank you.
Yeah, I suppose we should also mention, we're going to be sending out invites, but December 9th at 5:30, we'll be celebrating.
He didn't get away with it.
McBride. So we don't have that many people still on the call today, but we will be sending out invites soon. We just got our Zoom link, so I think we're getting ready to go.
That will be a retirement.
Dennis, it's kind of a roast. No, it's not. It'll all be clean fun.
The, the audience can't see this, but Dennis was hoping that he would get away with us not mentioning this. So at 5:30.
Second time this has happened this week.
Oh, is it? Yes, yes. Okay, so.
The Friday, December 9th, 5:30. We'll have a retirement.
Your friends.
For Dennis. And I think the district will be sending out the link for that, correct, John?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. With that said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for those who hung out with us all night, too.